Welcome and good afternoon, everybody. For those that are tuning in, thank you. Sorry we're slightly late behind the time, but we have been... Some technical issues, but we've now got members of the public who wish to be here seated. So, thank you for attending the Cooperative Executive. It is the last one of the electoral year. So, I would like, just before I start, to say a massive thank you to a couple of councillors who was standing down. One is councillor Kate McDonald. Thank you ever so much for everything you've done, especially with the budget and getting us through into this situation. And to councillor Anson Till for the way that you've looked after your portfolio, Alison, and thank you for all your service, so thanks for that. The meeting today is open to the public and will be webcast live. The recording will be available for people to view later through the council's website. We have a member of the public to ask a question. We've also got two petitions, I don't believe we've got speakers to them, and we've got another public question which councillor Mazza Ickbell, who sent his apologies, will be answering directly. Please can I ask that all mobile phones, telephones, IT is switched to silent mode so we don't disturb the meeting? There is no fire test planned for today, so if there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the town hall staff. The assembly point is Chuda Square, and yes, I love Chuda Square, thank you. Ask each Cooperative Executive member in turn now to introduce themselves. I should have done it at the beginning, but I would have thought that we'd have got to the last one and I forgot my lines, but I'm councillor Terry Fox. I'm the Member for Manor Castle Ward and Leader of the Council. Julie.
Good afternoon, councillor Julie Grochuck, Member for Stockbridge, Jeanne Puddan, and Executive Member for Community Engagement and Governance.
Jean.
Councillor Jane Dern, councillor for Southie Ward, and I'm best ward in the city. Executive Member for Education, Children and Families. Bit of a plug for my word.
Hi, thank you. Kate.
Good afternoon, councillor Kate McDonald. I represent Bithles Valley Ward, and I am the Executive Member for Finance and Resources.
George.
Thank you, Chair. I'm councillor George Mills-Hammond, councillor for Hillsborough Ward and Executive Member for Health and Social Care.
Thanks, George. Alison.
Thank you. Councillor Alison Till for Netheredge and Sharrow, and Executive Member of Sustainable Neighborhoods, Wellbeing, Parks and Leisure.
Douglas.
Yes, Douglas Johnson, Member for City Ward and Executive Member for Climate Change, Environment and Transport.
Thank you. Paul.
Thank you, Chair. I'm Paul Turpin, Ward Member for Bithles Valley and Executive Member for Inclusive Economy, Jobs and Skills.
Thanks, Paul. And finally, the other Paul.
Good afternoon. I am councillor Paul Wood and the Cooperative Exec Member for Housing Roads and Waste Management and the Local Councillor for Woodhouse Ward.
Thanks, Paul. I'll just ask the officers to introduce themselves. Kate.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. Kate Martin, Executive Director for the City Futures Portfolio.
Thank you. Craig.
Craig Rogerson, Democratic Services.
Eugene.
Eugene Walker, the team says Executive Director of Resources, current contents acting chief executive.
Thank you. David.
David Hollis, Assistant Director, Legal and Governance.
Thank you. John.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm John McRath. I'm the Executive Director for People Services.
Thank you, John. Ashwin. Thank you. We will ask officers to present, if you can introduce yourselves when you present the report. We've got apologies for absences from councillor Mazza Ickbell, Julian Duckworth and Kate Josephs. Thank you. Is there any exclusion of press today?
Yes, Chair. Item 15 on the agenda, one of the appendices contains exempt information. If members wish to discuss that information contained in the appendix, we'll ask members of the public and press to leave and pause the webcast at that point.
Thank you. Item four, declarations of interest from members. Julie.
Thank you, Chair. Can I declare an interest as I'm a member of the Stockbridge Towns Fund Board, which is one of the items on capital approval, so number 14 on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Any more declarations of interest? If not, item five, minutes of previous meetings, can we approve? Ed, thank you. Item six, public questions and petitions. I have two petitions submitted, no speakers. Petition number one is from Ellie Judge, electronic petition containing 156 signatures, requesting a council to leave the garden at 98 Craigview Crescent in its present condition. Councillor Anson Till, would you like to comment on that or are you quite confident to write to Ellie? Thank you. Julie.
Yeah. Can I just say, in relation to this, obviously it's a community garden that's in my ward. Local residents took over the plot of land during lockdown. It's provided a great deal of pleasure and comfort to residents during the pandemic, and I've been working very closely with residents, and we now have officers involved to actually officially turn it into a community garden. So, I'm really pleased with how that work's going, and I look forward to continuing to work with residents to get to the stage where it needs to get to. So, thank you.
Thank you, Julie. The next petition is from Mr W A Murray, not here to present that. That's a petition containing 262 signatures, requesting a pedestrian crossing close to Iron House Academy in the vicinity of Shire Green Lane, Moncton Road and Winkerbank Road. I don't know whether I should declare it because my grandson's going to that school, but anyway, I'll just throw it out there. I'll declare it, I said that. Councillor Douglas Johnson.
Yes, well, thank you. I will arrange to get back to Mr Murray with a response, once I've had some advice from officers, without any favours.
Thank you. We've got two public questions. The first public question is from Mr Adam Hurst. Adam, would you like to ask your question, please?
Well, after all these years, I've managed to work this thing out. Okay, well, thank you very much for letting me present this, everybody, and it's nice to see some old friends again. I think this really goes back to a question. I'm here in place of Matt Wilson, who unfortunately, he presented the original question to full council, but he's had to go and attend a hospital appointment with his wife today, so you've got me instead, I'm afraid, so apologies for that. Obviously, we did have a question at the March meeting regarding the issue of maintenance on Mortimer... Actually, it says Mortimer Lane in the letter. I think it's actually Mortimer Close. And I think we were... It was said that, obviously, while there were problems about doing any maintenance on an unadopted road, if any evidence emerged that any promises or undertakings were made around that, and this was obviously going back to 2016 and the construction of the Thorncliff Sports and Recreation Centre, we should present those and take things from there. So, we did... Matt and me did have a couple of letters. Some people who we'd met while out canvassing, basically, did send us a copy of a letter from Steve Barnes, I think... James Barnes, sorry, saying, and the quote was, "While Mortimer Lane is and will remain an unadopted public highway, we do accept that our construction traffic will increase its wear and tear more than usual. So, we will resurface the carriageway once the construction work is completed." Shortly after we presented this, one or two of the residents who'd made their own inquiries did get some correspondence back from the council, saying that... From officers, I hasten to add, saying that actually, the construction traffic was not as anticipated when the promise was made in December 2015, and that the road had already been previously damaged. However, in light of what the letter says, and I think it doesn't mention anything about we will check what the damage was and we will look at it afterwards, I think it is very clear that certainly the people living on Mortimer Close were left with an impression that this would... That the maintenance would at some time or another be completed. So, the two questions that I would like to ask is one, I would like to know what the view of the Cooperative Exec is of where we are with Mortimer Close and its maintenance following the two letters that were submitted, and also, if for any reason it was decided that actually the matter had changed and we weren't any longer going to do that, for whatever reason, at what stage were the people who'd received the letter, the original letter in December 2015, told that actually the maintenance would not now take place and the reasons why that wouldn't happen? So, there's some clarity on that, please. Thank you. Adam will turn off.
Thank you, Adam. Councillor Wood.
Thank you for your question. I understand, following the previous time, this was asked, officers have now located the paperwork regarding this item, and we will be arranging a meeting with the relevant officers and yourselves in view of your contribution and the council communications.
Thank you, and thank you, councillor Wood. Thank you, Adam. We have one other question which councillor Mazza Ickbell was going to reply to, personally to Mr Robin Hughes. Mr Robin Hughes is not with us today. We'll get councillor Ickbell to get in touch with him appropriately and answer the question. We have Mr Hughes's contact details, so thank you, Adam. Thank you. So, the next item on the agenda is... Any items going to be called in for scrutiny?
Port Chair.
Thank you. Item eight is for us to send the report to 22 members of staff who have recently retired from the council with over 20 years' service. From the executive, we are asked to convey our council's thanks for their work and extend best wishes for the future and a long and happy retirement, and request that the appropriate extract from the Cabinet resolution under the common seal of the council be forwarded to them. Can we agree that? Agreed? Thank you very much. Next item is item nine, the Sheffield Tobacco Control Strategy. Can I have it presented, officers, please? Yeah, schoolgirl error with that one. Could you carry it into yourself? And the report, please, thank you.
Lovely. Hi, I'm Sarah Hepwith, Health Improvement Principal, and I lead on the Sheffield Tobacco Control Strategy. I'm here today to bring the new proposals for the next five-year strategy and the future commissioning model in which to support the delivery of the strategy. Our ambition is to make smoking obsolete by 2030, in line with the government ambition, or to get smoking to 5% during that time. The strategy seeks to maintain efforts to reduce the harm caused by tobacco on residents of Sheffield, as well as to reduce health inequalities, death and disability caused by tobacco use and second-hand smoke. In addition, it seeks to address the impact of tobacco on Sheffield City Council's resources and the burden on adult social care costs from avoidable disability. It also seeks to impact on the local economy positively and the NHS system through productivity gains for businesses and to boost the local economy through money spent... Through ex-smoker spending habits shifting, we're not spending on tobacco and spending on other consumer products. This strategy will significantly contribute to reduce costs from treating smoking-related illness, both to social care and the NHS, and it will also contribute to lifting many smokers out of poverty. It's important to note that smoking drives thousands of people in Sheffield into poverty, and that impacts on both adults and children. We've still got 61,000 adults that continue to smoke and 940 children that start smoking every year. We've made significant success in the last five years in reducing smoking prevalence in all social groups by 7.3%, but we've still got a long ways to go. And we have 1,000 deaths per year from smoking-related illness, and these are avoidable deaths. Smoking is linked to every area of disadvantage, and there's a clear gradient, the more disadvantaged you are, the more likely you are to smoke. Poorer smokers also spend more money on smoking. So, the proposal seeks to maintain the current level of investment, which includes stocks smoking services, marketing communications, and a wide range of comprehensive tobacco control interventions. However, we're proposing to redistribute some of the money from the Smoke Free Children Service and the Smoke Free Spaces work, to increase further investments upstream to deliver more prevention and more early interventions, specifically to support pregnant women through incentives, to increase the investment in trading standards enforcement work to reduce the availability and accessibility of cheap and illicit tobacco to children, and also increase investment in the Stocks Smoking Service, as we now have the quit programme in secondary care, and that will create increased demand. I would also like to put some investment, a small amount, into the public health budget for staff to deliver the programme. We currently commission a range of tobacco control interventions, and we want to build on the success of the last five years, but we know that the current service that we have in place for Smoke Free Children has not achieved the gains that we wanted to in terms of uptake and also in terms of preventing children from stopping smoking. So, we need a step change in order to see that change be realised, and this is what's described within the report. This will accelerate the trend across all social groups, as we have done the last five years, in adults, but it will also help us to prevent children from starting to smoke. And we know that these evidence-based model, these evidence-based interventions are really critical. Smoke-free homes, smoke-free policies, making children... Environments for children where they've got... Smoking is unusual, will make the biggest difference in supporting adults to quit. So, with all of that said, please can I ask the Co-op Executive to note the recommendations and hopefully endorse them going forward so we can start the commissioning process?
Thank you, Sarah. Any questions, comments? Jean.
Is that better? Sorry. Yeah. Thank you, Sarah. I'm really interested by, obviously, the impact on children and the fact that it hasn't gone down. And obviously, we've had the pandemic for two years, so lots of children will have been at home, and as we know, most children that smoke, it's that their parents do smoke as well, but not completely. I really welcome the way forward, moving forward in this, but what I would like to know is that as we move into the committee system next year, that the impact of this would be monitored through the children's area, because I would really like to be able to feel that that input, we could actually see if it was paying off, and then we would know that, you know, medically and everywhere else, I mean, because I think that that's the bit that I feel that I would have liked to have got my teeth into a little bit more, do you know? But we've had a crazy year, and it's been amazing and ambitious and definitely needed because of the health impacts later on in life, and there's absolutely no way that you can smoke earlier on and continue without it having an effect in your health later on. But I would like that to be monitored through the children's, just so that we can actually see that. And another thing, do we have the data that this is spread across the city, or is it in certain areas more? And again, how will that be influenced through the Lacks, and so that local councillors can actually make sure that we are targeting and we're able to do that? Because I know in my ward, but, you know, I've got an amazing project going off, and I know that the women are smoking. So, it's actually, could we access that funding and tailor it just for our communities? Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Yeah, I think it's important to state that smoking in children is at an all-time low. So, that's the first thing just to say. It's just that we haven't accelerated trends at the fastest rate. But it's really important, as you say, in terms of as we go forward, to make sure we've got those solid links, so with yourself, with the Director of Education, and we're also looking at how we develop the schools offer as well, so really welcome recommendation. And we'll look at how we can work that into the committee system and the Lacks as we move forward. Also, the youth strategy, we talked about that at the previous meeting. I met actually with the youth council last night, and I'm aware that Terry also met with them, and they certainly gave me a lot to take forward around smoking and e-cigarettes as well, lots of insight. So, we'll continue to do that and work forward. I think the other aspect in terms of the data that we get is from the local youth survey, so through schools. That isn't broken down for children geographically, but for adults, we can do that, so we can certainly share the data that we've got and the comprehensive needs assessment, but you know, absolutely. Thank you. Thanks for your comments.
Thank you very much. Alison.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Sarah, for the excellent work that you've been doing. This report is incredibly thorough, and I think that your plans for the future are also, yeah, evidence-based, make a lot of sense to me, and I'm really pleased that you've decided to get us on this track, because I think that the next five years are likely to be even more successful than the past five years, which is really saying something. So, just want to thank you and the public health team, and also the trading standards team for the brilliant work that you've been doing on behalf of Sheffield. Thank you.
Thank you, Alison.
Thank you. If there's no more questions, comments, or George?
Thank you, George. And thank you, Sarah, for this. It's, you know, I shared with you some comments, it's really comprehensive and positive in terms of how we're looking at this. Really quite a simple question, I think. In terms of the services within this, both our services and NHS services that interact directly with citizens, do we or can we collect information about whether they are users or clients of other council services so we can measure those kind of cross-impacts? Thank you.
Yeah, we can, in terms of onward referral to other services, and that we've probably got that more in the sense of debt advice and so on, but yeah, we can do that. And if there's specific aspects, we can include that in the new tender going forward.
Thank you. And thank you for that, Sarah. If there's no more questions, comments, there's the recommendations, can we agree those recommendations? Agree? Thank you very much. Thank you, Sarah.
Thanks very much.
Next item is item 10, the Parks Tennis Procurement was presented. Thank you.
Apologies, I don't have a name card, but my name's Ruth Bell, and I'm the head of Parks and Countryside. I'll start, if that's okay, and then hand over to Jo. So, this report is seeking approval for the commissioning of a partner to work with us on an extended version of the current Parks Tennis Programme, and approval for the funding contribution through prudential borrowing from the council of up to £180,000 towards the development cost of the activity hub. You'll all be aware that in 2018, the Better Parks Initiative was approved, providing the framework for the Parks and Countryside Service to identify and develop projects across the city to enhance the quality of the offer within our parks and the experience of parks users, as well as appropriately generate much-needed investment for our green spaces. This project is one of those being explored under the Better Parks Framework. We obviously won't go through the report page by page, but Jo will provide you with a brief overview.
Thank you. Hi, yes, I'm Jo Pearce. I'm the Service Manager in the Parks and Countryside Service and Lead on Business and Partnerships. So, as Ruth mentioned, I won't go through the report in detail, but hopefully you'll have seen that it outlines the engagement and outcomes of the existing programme, the potential offer of the programme, and the consultation and conversations that we've had in developing the proposal. So, the existing Parks Tennis partnership across Sheffield has been operating since 2017, following a procurement process. The current programme is working well and reaches significantly increased during the first five years, and particularly coming out of the pandemic, and there were the stats and some insight in the report. This was the first outdoor Parks Tennis programme of its kind from the Lawn Tennis Association. It led to significant investment in our facilities. The programme reaches a really large audience of different ages, backgrounds and abilities, and encourages people to be more active. As outlined within the report, we have considered the option of just continuing as is for the next phase of the programme. However, for the last five years, we've been talking with our partners, Sport England, the Lawn Tennis Association, and the existing operator and partner Courtside CIC, a community interest company, exploring the potential of making the programme even better, more sustainable, reaching different people, new audiences, and developing something that offers more than tennis alone, and that's the decision we're seeking with you today. We've explored the progression and research and innovations around multi-activity spaces, active environments, and have also seen how behaviours and attitudes towards physical activity and exercising in the outdoors have evolved through the pandemic. We've seen how the numbers of people walking, jogging and cycling have shot through the roof over the last two years, and we've also fortunately seen many people return to our gyms and leisure facilities, and yet some people are continuing to prefer to exercise outdoors, which is what we are keen to progress and enhance further. The council recognises that leisure provision, both indoors and outdoors, is critical post-COVID-19, with many people requiring rehabilitation after suffering long COVID or diminished mental health caused by lockdown. The health and wellbeing of residents is a priority, and it's key that services delivered by facilities such as this play a vital role, both now and in the future. It's therefore critical that long-term sustainable plans are put in place to maintain and grow these facilities. This proposal is not about privatisation of green space, but about providing a high-quality offer of continued free activity alongside structured and affordable activities. The hub is designed to appeal to a wider audience while providing the necessary secondary income to sustain the model and future investment in the site. With a multi-sport offer, a hub for other activities, and increased capacity for outreach activity, this proposal is about engaging with different audiences which tennis, or in fact, sport alone, wouldn't be able to reach. As outlined within the report, we have carried out various elements of consultation and continued the conversation with key partner stakeholders and users of the park for a number of years. However, after recent discussions with the Friends of Hillsborough Park Group, a key partner for the Parks and Countryside Service, we've carried out a specific consultation on the proposal, a bit more specifically around the designs and potential layout of the project at Hillsborough. It's still live as we speak, but we've received a good response to date, with over 370 respondents, with overall support of around 66% in support of the proposal and around 16% against locally, with a range of feedbacks which we'd continue to use to guide and mould the project going forward. We're, of course, in ongoing conversations with existing partners in the park to ensure that the offer is supportive and complimentary to everything else that's going on in the park. As I said, and Ruth said at the start, it's a project that's been developed over the past five years, with funding being offered from a range of partners to improve and enhance the facilities within Hillsborough Park and wider. We're therefore asking for approval to proceed to commissioning a partner to work with us on a sustainable extended version of the programme and approval of the funding towards the development costs. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Ruth, too. Any questions, comments? George?
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Ruth, and Jo, and I enjoyed getting to know about what's, you know, planned for Hills Park and it's... And although I don't want to say more than people should, obviously respond to the conversation while it's still open, it's really welcome that all the thought and investment's been lined up to have more people being more active in the wonderful Hills Park. So, that is really welcome. And I just want to say more widely on this, I think, I know from many people that there's been so much success from the current partnership, and so I think it's really good that you're looking at the way to improve and tweak the overall approach to Parks Tennis, because I know that so many more people can enjoy it if we make some changes that are outlined here, so I support that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for that. Paul?
Cheers, Terry. And thanks very much, Jo, for bringing this, and thanks for the email you sent me. Sorry, I didn't reply. It was over the Easter holidays, I had a bit of time off, but I did read it. Yeah, it's a really good development, you know, Hillsborough Park has just been changed amazing, it's going to be a proper flagship park, and that's really good to see, especially in a different end of town. I was just slightly unclear about the possibility of a second café opening and the competition that that would bring, and, you know, especially seeing as there was no café there before. And lots of our parks would like a café and toilet facilities, and we know that it's not always really good business. So, can you just clarify what's going on with that? And on the café thing, which I think is slightly unconnected question, is about, can we ensure that there's a good, healthy food offering at these cafés? Because quite often we see a wide variety of beige food in our family locations, and yeah, so if that's all right, thanks.
Yeah, thank you. And thanks for your... Yeah, thank you. And thanks for your, yeah, yeah, for your feedback. From a cafe perspective, we're talking about catering and welfare facilities. We know from previous research and Outdoor City and the Better Parts Initiative, it's around the brewloo and something to do. So something that brings the toilet is a key priority that's come through many consultations. So having a toilet is key. Having a cafe necessarily, as you said, the Depot Bakery's opened as part of the Coach House Age UK development at the top, which has been really successful. Therefore, something that provides catering is important, but it doesn't necessarily have to be a cafe. So we would be seeking approval to procure something that offers welfare catering and a toilet facility at the bottom. We have, however, benchmarked with other places within Sheffield and wider and do feel that there is sufficient kind of footfall. It's increasingly becoming a really vibrant destination site in the city. Therefore, the ability to actually reach that, to manage that increased footfall feels something that we believe is doable. However, the way that this will be set up with a partner would mean that that would be for the partner to kind of work through. That didn't clarify that. It's very well.
I can add to that. One of the things that has come back through the consultation that we've done is that the public do feel that there is space for a second catering facility. But what they are quite clear about is that they probably, they would want something different to Depot. Depot has got a very, very specific offer, and they feel that there is a market for something slightly different, perhaps slightly cheaper and probably a much smaller offer. So we wouldn't be looking for Depot Mark II because they're fantastic. They're up in the top of the park. They're in that beautiful building. This would be a smaller offer, depending on exactly what the partner came forward and said they wanted to do, probably serving a slightly different market. So we're not looking for direct competition. We don't want to cause any issues for Age UK, such a fantastic partner. But we do feel, and the market appears to feel, that there is space for two cafes within the park.
Would you be able to, you know, I respect what you're saying. I'm just thinking that, you know, there is that risk of we go from no cafes to one, to two, and then back to none because neither of them are viable anymore. And I just wonder what, I don't know, not necessarily guarantees, but what can we do to make sure that doesn't happen? And what support can we give to, you know, so that they've got the best chance of surviving?
I mean, it feels like the answer is probably to work through some of that before we go to procurement, so to work out what we think the market will bear, speak to more people specifically about a catering offer, to make sure that we're not pitching it for something that people don't want. Work with Age UK is important to say that we have spoken to Age UK and obviously Depot Bakery about this, and we do need to talk to them a little bit more as we go forward. As for guarantees, obviously it's very difficult because one of the things that we're doing is bringing a partner in to take on the project. We can't guarantee to them that they will be successful. We'll work with them on the best way of doing that, but it is a little bit difficult. Do you want me to go back to your question about the healthy offer? Obviously, we are looking to go out to procure this, to commission a partner. So we do have some control over what we ask for, and we will make sure that that is a key part of it, that we don't want them just selling chocolate bars and crisps. I don't think that that's what anybody would want in that kind of site. It doesn't really go all that well with a sporting facility.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. Alison?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Ruth, and thank you, Jo. I've had the pleasure of having regular briefings about this initiative, and so I know how hard you've been working on it and all the effort that's gone into it. And with your little team, you know, it's no small achievement at all. It's really, really excellent. And I'm satisfied that you've gone through this so thoroughly that I don't have any concerns at all. I think that, given the way that it's going to be structured, that the financial risk won't actually sit with the council, which is always an advantage, obviously. And also, of course, though, that we do want to do everything we can to support business and community interest companies to do well, because it's in our interests and in the people of Sheffield's interests that this all works out. I think it's a really good point about the healthy offer. Yeah, I think, and that's something that we can do, isn't it? That's something that we write into the tender, that what our expectations are. And I'm also really pleased that it's going to be very fair in terms of costs for tennis. And so, you know, people in different parts of the city, it will be an affordable situation for them and that we have that ability to make sure we have a price cap so that we can protect that offer, that it remains an inclusive and equitable service. So I think that you should feel really proud and really pleased of the work that you've done, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Alison. Jane?
Thank you. Thank you. It's building on slightly on to the offer, you know, regarding the cafe. I'm really pleased that it's going to be different. As I said earlier, I represent Southie Ward, so obviously Hillsborough Park is used by a lot of my residents. And there's been quite a lot recently about the cafe, the other one. It doesn't always give a lot of people what they actually are wanting. So that would be really, really comforting for them to hear. And I'm really, really pleased about the opportunity for tennis in that side of the city. Not only are we talking about people getting physically active, it's quite a good thing for people to watch. And we know it will really help with the social isolation because it's a very, very interesting sport to actually watch. But I do want to thank you and also to say this has been rumbling around for absolutely years, and it's took an awful lot of tenacity and an awful lot of drive. I can remember councillor Lee going on about, you know, and councillor Pashdak and councillor Lindas Hammond, you know, and as was councillor Johnson at the time, really, really keen to promote this area so strongly. So thank you, and my constituents are so excited by it. But they definitely do want a different offer because it's been coming quite strong. So yeah, but thank you so much. But you won't be seeing me on the tennis court, don't worry. My days of tennis skirts are well and truly over.
Thank you. Jane. Julie?
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of points from me, building on what councillor Turpin said, really. You know, this is a really good paper. As councillor Dunst just said, it's really good to see that we finally got this to fruition. It's very exciting. Hillsborough Park is a destination park, you know, people come from all over the city to go there. And I think we're also very blessed that we have lots of large-scale events on at the park as well. So it doesn't just rely on the footfall of people going to, you know, walk the dogs, feed the ducks, play in the playgrounds, do the jogging, you know, whatever it is they're doing. You know, we have tram lines, we have fairs, we have things going on there all the time. So I think for me, in terms of there being two cafes there, that's not really been an issue because I think there are sufficient, well, one, users of the park anyway, but also the big events that we have on there that will build on that and that hopefully we'll make sure that they are, you know, sustainable, well-used and that people will be able to enjoy the park for many years to come. And as with councillor, I think I'll be watching rather than playing the tennis. But it's great to know it's going to be there. So thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, Julie. Councillor Wood?
It's good to see that this is progressing. I remember the initial meeting started under councillor Mary Lee many years ago. I hope that we will see this progressing to other areas of the city, especially some of our most deprived areas who have tennis facilities. What discussions are ongoing about the future plans with the Lawn Tennis Association?
Thank you. Jewel?
Yeah. Can you hear me okay? As you will have seen within the report, this investment links to improvements at Hollins End and Ecclesfield Park as well. But we recently had a question around, that came through around Mearsbrook Park and other parks have been mentioned. We've got a really good relationship with the Lawn Tennis Association from an indoor sport and an outdoor sport perspective. These are the courts being focused on at the minute. But should future investment become available, we would definitely seek to make court improvements and look to those priority sites across the city. It's part of that ongoing relationship we have with them. So yeah, noted and something we'll kind of continue to do with them. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no more questions, comments, can I just kind of just add a chair's comment on this because I'd welcome the knowledge exchange that's gone on here today. But I mean, on my walkabouts around the city, I visited most of our parks, which are the jewellery icon, there's no doubt about that in Sheffield. And no matter what conversation I've had with the park users, toilets is a major common denominator here. So to hear that we are working away not only with the Lawn Tennis Association, but to increase that facility within the parks and all is really welcoming on you. But I'd like to thank you. I know this has been going around for some time, so it's fantastic to see that getting this over the line. So there are a number of recommendations in the paper. Can we agree those? Agree? Thank you. Thank you, Jo. Thank you, Ruth. Next item is item 11, procurement of adult social care mental health recovery framework for people with eligible mental health needs. Is that Louisa? Thank you. Do you want to kind of introduce yourselves with the report? Thank you.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Alexis Chablis, Director of Adult Health and Social Care.
Louise King, Strategic Commissioning Manager for Mental Health.
And we're here today to talk about the proposal to recommission a mental health recovery framework for Sheffield. And it's a great opportunity to speak today regards this. A key priority around adult health and social care has been to continue to improve our mental health offer to the people of Sheffield, particularly in light of the pandemic and the effects of the pandemic, but also in recognition of the increased demand that we have faced across over the last couple of years. So due to this, we have a proposal to recommission our current mental health framework and very much in line with our adult health and social care strategy, which was approved in March, to very much make that shift towards independent living and a focus on outcome-based approaches as we go forward. And it's a great opportunity to very much focus on how we do things differently in Sheffield and particularly approve the offer to people. We are going to focus on two levels, very much focused on crisis support and secondly, ongoing care to individuals. And at that point, what I'm going to do is hand over to Louisa to give more details.
Great. So currently, the service supports about 300 people. So it's people who will be living in their own homes or in tenancies, but they need a bit of support throughout the week to help them to live independently. We currently have four providers on the framework because one of the biggest providers on the framework left the market last, in the autumn. And at the moment, we don't really, we don't have enough capacity on the frameworks. That means that we have people who are waiting to receive care and support. So one of the big things that we're wanting to do in this recommissioning is increase the capacity that we have. And as part of that, it's increase the number of providers who are on the framework because that kind of gives the framework a little bit more resilience. We have done some extensive consultations. So Rethink, the kind of the local arm of Rethink, a national mental health charity, did some good consultation with all of the service users and also some providers who are on the framework to give us some feedback on the current framework and what they would like to see for a future framework. And it's that that we've included as we've come up with the service model for this future commissioning. So our plan is to go out to tender probably in May or June, and then we'll transition into a new service in the autumn. Thank you. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Question? Kate?
Thank you, and thank you for the report. It's really good. I've got two questions. One is on paragraph 110. It's about the regional framework. And there was just a comment in it that I was interested in following up, and that's that the previous framework didn't seem to work very well. I just wondered why or in what way, as in what's the learning really that you're going to take into procuring this new model? My second question is actually about communications with people who are currently using the services and how we're going to ensure that they don't feel unsettled or alarmed by the changes. Because you did refer to changes in the current number of providers. And as a local councillor, I did actually encounter some casework with the individual. And in fact, the communication had come from one of the support workers. So it hadn't come directly via the services. Anxiety had been created by feedback from the staff. So the two questions are, what was went wrong before that we're going to put right? And how are we going to make sure that we provide reassurance to people who currently use our services or these services? Thank you.
I'll just turn my microphone on, sorry. This is just a Sheffield-based service, and we've done some research. We spoke to commissioners in Rotherham and Barnsley as part of this commissioning work. And we were kind of encouraged that we were wanting to deliver this kind of service in Sheffield because I don't think similar services exist in Rotherham and Barnsley. So.
In terms of, I think, the learning from this, that's the first question, is in terms of the learning from the first procurement framework, because I think what Louise alluded to is that there's been no resilience in the framework. So essentially, what's happened is a provider has essentially walked away from delivering care. And so what that means is a time of, in a nutshell, a time of increased demand for mental health support. What we don't have is essentially is a framework agreement that enables us to have a sufficient number of providers to deliver care. So what we've got to do within this is very much take the learning from that and how we build resilience so that we have the effective rate of care providers available. But also, secondly, is ensure that we take the learning from the benchmark and from other areas, and we very much focus on that outcome-based and recovery-focused work and going ahead. And that then comes into the learn that we took from Rethink, which I think has been really important. Rethink are a really good agency and actually supporting us with other pieces of work. So we're absolutely taking and ensuring that people's views are central to what we do in going forward. And in terms of the communications with people who use our services, what's going to be really important is when we go to tender, we want to do two things, is absolutely to make sure that people with lived experience are part of, you know, this and actually informing our retender. But also, secondly, in terms of when we award to successful providers, that we have a very clear communications and support plan in place, so that there's a clear transitions plan, but also clear communications and support arrangement in place, so that we could give absolute reassurance to individuals affected, but also hopefully give a wee positive message out to the city that we're absolutely invested and committed to supporting people experiencing mental health in the city, which I think is a really key thing that we want to do given on the pandemic.
Thank you, and I think that's exactly the right message we want to get out. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Kate? Paul?
Mental health provision, we have tried to access through housing services, has been woefully inadequate for years. How will this contribute to dealing with this particular problem? Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Very good question. And so coming to post, this is one of the key issues that has certainly come to me and come to post is how do we access mental health services? And what this will do is, you know, ultimately increase the number of social care providers available in the city. But secondly, on the 16th of March, is the COPSEC agreed to go and bring back directly management of mental health social work provision back into, under directly management of adult social care, which means that for the first time in a very long time, we will have direct responsibility over mental health social work. And what that means in wee practical terms is that we put a project group around that, which involves college from housing and children's services and also college from communities. So that very much, we are absolutely thinking about how do we connect not only part of the mental health recovery framework, but also the other work that we're undertaking in terms of mental health social work provision, improving access to people who require very much valuable and needed mental health services in the city. So it's very much aligned to that other piece of work as well.
Thank you. George?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Louisa, for you and your team for the work on this. I know it's, as you've laid out, there's been a lot of work to, before this started, to stabilise the previous recovery framework before moving on to this new independence and support framework. Because of, as councillor Donald laid out, the, you know, the issues with losing providers. And I do think that the people that rely on this have a lot of high needs and actually that more resilient future service will give. that more resilient future service will give everyone that relies on this more reassurance that those services will always be there in the way they need them. And furthermore, what I really hope is that come forward when this goes out, that there'll be, you know, not just a stronger and more resilient range of providers, but also providers that can deliver things in 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 new and ways to keep people healthier and indeed as far as possible to promote their independence wherever that is possible. So I I I really welcome this. But I also, you know, you know, note what, you know, councillor, what another said, this is not, this is not all of mental health care in the city, far from it. And that's, and absolutely, as Alexis, you picked up, we need to make sure the links with social work and with those healthcare services as well, that many, many people using this framework will also be receiving healthcare services and make sure, we need to make sure those are integrated and that this new newly drawn framework is at the centre of a really preventative and a really transformative mental health system in the city. Thank you for your work. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions, comments? If, Alison, you just indicated, sorry, sorry. Okay, if if not, I just want obviously to say that this is an absolute active proposal on our duty to the public sector and our equality drive. And I think to address those protected characteristics that we know we have real issues, I really look forward to this and to get them action plans out to address for those people that need our our help and our assistance. So I really welcome that and welcome the the work that you've done on it. Thank you ever so much, Louisa and Alexis. Where's some recommendations? Can we agree those recommendations in the report? Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. The next item is the procurement of care and support services in extra care schemes. Thank you.
I think everyone was me, so I'm glad to introduce you.
Hi, I'm Sarah Swinburne, and I'm the Commissioning Officer for Extra Care.
And I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank Sarah for the amount of work that she's really undertaken around this framework. It's it's been a very good piece of work. So thank you very much for the opportunity to discuss the proposal today. The purpose of the report is to develop a procurement strategy for the delivery of a personal care and support for tenants within four extra care schemes in the city. And the proposals are in line with our new adult social care strategy, which very much seeks a shift towards far more independent living and greater focus on achievement of personal outcomes. And the contract ends in October 22, which is reason for the request to reprocure. And very much the focus is on embedding technology-enabled care, outcome-based services, and very much flexible support and connecting people to their communities across Sheffield. And at that point, I'm going to hand over to Sarah.
So where the contract ends, October this year, so we want to go out to reprocure contracts. The original contracts were issued in 2015, where we had four successful providers at the time. During the years of the contract running, these providers did actually exit the market, and we now only have one provider delivering care to the four schemes, and that has worked really well. So we're hoping to continue that in the new contract. One provider, it works well with one registered manager, not a registered manager at each site. We want to procure services for planned and unplanned care, so it will be, the eligible needs in the day will be covered through this contract. It doesn't include the night time eligible needs of the person that will be in another contract. The unplanned care is for any emergencies or any one-off incidents, so the provider will be on site 24 hours to deliver this care on ad hoc means. Got me trying to thought now.
That's okay.
We will also.
It's okay. We have, what we're seeking today is to note the recommendations and the proposal. Ultimately, what we want to go and do is is to maintain stability in terms of the individuals within the tenancy, but ultimately gain resilience in how we go forward. It's a, the focus very much is in line with our overall strategies in adult social care, and that is to promote, they're very much that focus for more flexible working, but ultimately more independent living and more connecting people to local communities. And that focus that it says describing towards moving from multiple different registered managers to one registered manager, one oversight, one focus, is really much getting a stability and continuity and going ahead. So and the team have worked really hard to kind of work with the provider and really work in a very different way in going forward. So so we are seeking to endorse the, note the recommendations endorsing going forward.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any questions? Jane, and then George?
Thank you. Thank you so much. You know, quite passionate about this, to say the least. Page 121, which is saying, you mentioned about the transition route with children. I really, really welcome this. I, can we have it noted, Chair, that that works really closely with the transitions team on the special educational needs? Because that was an area of concern. So I think this is something that we can really join together on that. So I'm here working away, making sure everything's, yes, so, but lovely, yeah, great. And whatever we can do, it was highlighted in the news today about the number of people that were needed with, for enhanced living support. So I think it's really timely. It's come to Co-op Exec and, yeah, well done, George. Councilwoman Hammond, thank you.
Thank you, Jane. George?
Thank you, Chair. And yeah, thank you, Sarah, for all your hard work and support. And it's, as you outlined, it's been another, it's been another contract where the kind of the history of it has been a bit rocky in terms of dealing with providers deciding to exit the the market for it. But actually, I think, as you've outlined, we've come to a position where actually there's something that really works. Because at the moment, there's a, you know, we've got this limited number of extra care schemes for, and we, you know, I share your confidence that we can find, you know, continue to have a provider that will be able to successfully deliver good care across all those four schemes. I just really wanted to draw your attention to the fact that there were, there was a really good discussion about extra care, but also more widely, other forms of older people's independent living at the Transitional Committee a number of weeks ago. And I think it's something that hopefully a future, future adult social care committee will want to take up to really look at how we can explore the benefits of these, these kind of schemes so they can impact more people, so that the care that's provided there and the living provided there is more preventative and is high quality for everyone, because I know the people that live in these schemes know the benefits and want to see how we can spread those to far more people, hopefully. So thank you much for the support, and I endorse it. Thank you.
Thank you, George. There's no more questions, comments? There's recommendations on this paper? Can we agree those recommendations? Agreed? Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. The next item is item 13, procurement of enhanced support living framework. Is that you again, Alexis? And is it Christine? I can't let you do yourself. Thank you.
I'm going to introduce Christine.
Hello, I'm Christine Anderson, Commissioning Service Manager with Lead for Land Disability Services.
Just wanted to note how much Christine's really undertaken to really develop a new supportive living framework and our support to adults with a learning disability. So very much thank you for this opportunity to speak to you regarding the proposals regarding an extra enhanced supportive living framework. This, the proposal is to offer range of services with and support to to people with a disability in the community and very much supports and delivers upon our adult social care strategy in going forward. But in particular, for me, that prioritises our focus on adults with a learning disability in the city. And as very much we, we spoke about earlier on about the priority of folks who experience a mental health, and coming to post, very much people with learning disability and autism, very much highlighted to me, is highly wanting us to go and make sure that we develop and respond to and have dedicated and specific supports in the city for people. And this is our start of our commitment of delivering upon that and going forward. And so very much the the focus and priority is to 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 develop a new proposal in going ahead that ensures that we have dedicated support for people in the city. So on that point, I'm going to hand over to Christine.
Thank you, Alexis. Thank you, everyone. I'll just pick out some of the salient points of the report. Basically, we're setting out the options which we've considered for commissioning an enhanced supportive living framework, and we'd like your approval today to begin procurement. Some of the background is that in Sheffield, we've had a successful supportive living framework for people with learning disability since 2014. However, there's always been a recognition that there was a gap in the market to provide support for people with more enhanced support needs. So for example, people with behaviours that challenge challenging services, people where there's a risk posed for themselves or others, there may be an offending history, multiple breakdowns historically, and a number of people who came through the transforming care agenda, who had been in long-term institutional care or hospital settings. Just some of the history to this, we we were on the brink, and we actually came to Cabinet in 2018 to have a local enhanced supportive living framework. But then that was superseded by some regional discussions with Yorkshire and Humber clinical commissioning groups. And in 2019, we signed up for a regional enhanced supportive living framework, which had 11 providers. And this is for the, for the group of people I've just described, 16 and over. So this was launched in March 2019. We've called off the free regional framework to set up a supportive living service at Woods With You, which some of you may be familiar with. That's an eight-bedded accommodation scheme. And we've also procured, we've called off to procure two bespoke packages for people with extremely complex support needs to bring them back into city, one of whom is just about to return from Doncaster, from a very high-cost placement to live in his own council tenancy with 24-hour support. Unfortunately, though, the regional framework is is come to an end now. It came to an end in March this year, and there was no appetite to renew it. We've been in touch with regional colleagues over the past three years. It's not been successful for a number of reasons. And I think for us in in Sheffield particularly, it's because we just haven't had that sort of local oversight, and it's been quite restrictive in 11 providers, although it sounds quite a lot. A lot of them haven't expressed any interest in in packages that we we've put out to the market. So we have completed an options appraisal. As Alexis has alluded to, we are looking at an all-age framework for people with disabilities to go out to tender later this year. But that leaves us a considerable gap between now and going out for the supported living framework and the other services. And we have got an increased demand of particularly young people coming through transitions, which you've referred to before. Yeah, so we we realise is a considerable gap in the market, and there's an anxiety about not having any framework in place between now and next spring when the new framework will be launched. So to do nothing wasn't really an option. We also recognise, we know from our supported living framework providers who are excellent, that there's a certain level of expertise and capacity that is required to to support this particular group of individuals. To to leave that gap, again, we didn't consider as an option because that leaves us to the likelihood of making more spot purchases, which isn't satisfactory for a number of reasons, and also to potentially have to make more out-of-city placements, which, you know, it we want to avoid as well. So our preferred option is to establish a local enhanced supportive living framework. We feel this can be wider than having a regional framework, and it can include prevention. We can look in a greater level at returning people from out-of-city residential care. It'll definitely, it is much needed to smooth transition for younger people coming through into adult services. We we also would envisage that an enhanced supportive living provider would work with us to progress for people to have a more independent lifestyle and ultimately to call off the the other supportive living framework. We also feel the advantage is that it'll allow some of our smaller local organisations to feel like that they're in with a chance to to offer a submission when we go out to market. What we want to do, and we've got experience of this over the last few years, is that each call-off will be individualised for each person that we're providing support for, because each of them is absolutely unique. So that just gives a greater diversity to the market. Also, having a a local framework will give us more control over quality, measuring quality outcomes for people and price as well. We've, we've got some really positive relationships with our current providers and a number of speculative providers, and we know that there is an appetite to apply to be on our local framework. In terms of consultation, just to mention, we haven't done any recent consultation on this framework because it was done quite robustly, both for our abortive local framework three, four years ago, and for the regional framework with robust consultation with Speak Up Rotherham and co-production. But our intention would be that we'd co-produce any framework moving forward in conjunction with the other work, procurement work we're doing at the moment. Just to draw to your attention as well, typically, an enhanced framework will incur higher costs than the standard framework, and we were anticipating that the value of the project over four years will be approximately 7.5 million. But the intention is to use this framework for transitions, as we've said, and provision for people who are currently in inexpensive out-of-city provision. I think that was really my summary, so if there are any questions, be happy to take them.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any questions, comments? George?
Thanks, Chair, and thanks, Christine, and for you and your team in this. It's been another really, really complicated one over some time. And I think it was, you know, the the regional, the the regional approach to this, I think, given the form of provide, the kind of providers in the market, this was a sensible way to go down. But, you know, perhaps it hasn't always delivered everything that not just us, but a number of authorities, over Yorkshire and Humber would have wanted. So I think this is absolutely the right place to be. I do think, looking forward, it's going to be crucial to have conversations with colleagues in our, you know, current and future ICS region to see if, you know, there are ideas going forward about how we might do this into the medium and and long term. Because I think some of them, I do think that some of the, the kind of, the kind of providers and things that come forward might benefit from working together. But that doesn't mean I don't have faith in it, in in our Sheffield Enhanced Framework. I do, and I think I really thank you for the work you've done to make sure we're here to sign off today. Thank you much.
Thank you.
Right, thanks, George. There's no more questions or comments? Kate?
Thank you. I was just trying to work out how to phrase this. I was just, I understand this isn't about residential care, but but there is also a spectrum, isn't there, in terms of residential? And and the more that we can provide enhanced alternatives does have an impact for residential care provision. I was interested actually around the transforming care agenda. It's all gone a bit quiet on that. And just for people who are less aware of that, that this was the post-Winterton stuff that the government brought out, which was to try and get people back out of large institutions closer to to where they lived with no money. So I just wondered whether or not that was still pressure on local authorities actually to, both to make provision, but also in terms of the funding implications of that, and whether or not this piece of work actually, whether it's got any implications for this piece of work. But I do welcome the work and thank you for the report and the work you've put into it, by the way.
So thank you for that. Very good question, very stupid question, I would say. We have, it's, so within Sheffield, one of the key things is that there has been a lot of good work undertaken so far in terms of transforming care agenda, and this will absolutely support the work going forward, particularly bringing back, you know, supports to Sheffield so that we have more direct control over our local resources. But one of the key issues with transforming care exactly that is for, is the longevity and sustainability of support. So one of the key things that we've been taking forward with an adult social care partner, both strategic plan but also a new module, is doing three key things. The number one is putting new leadership structure in place, which to have a dedicated focus on working with adults, and particularly the transition, support the transition from children's to adults. And then secondly, around the transforming care agenda, we've actually got a season discussions now with health colleagues to look at, how do we collaboratively take this agenda forward and have a very key focus and make sure that this is brought within the new integration arrangements, but also very much features in within the joint commissioning committee as well, so that we've got a clear long-term plan, but also a clear focus on the joint approaches that we need to undertake within the city. And then third for me, which is really important, is that we are absolutely ensuring that people's voices and views are central to decision-making. And one of the key focuses within all work streams in adult social care is to really consolidate and bring together our citizens board, which is ensuring that the views of adults, particularly with learning disability and autism, and particularly people experiencing mental health, are able to go and inform how we approach and go forward. So that the transforming care agenda, but also their collaborative work, is very much a collaboration with the people who are most affected by the decisions that we make. And, you know, and that's certainly been, you know, one of the ambitions is to hopefully then bring our report to our future committee about the progress and the future delivery plan based on these discussions.
Just a quick follow-up, let's comment really, and that's hope that the NHS bear their share of the costs. But although this isn't actually about the costs, it's about the quality of care and appropriate care. But nevertheless, there is a financial element to that, which we've really struggled with over a period of time, but thank you for that.
Thank you. If there's no more comments, questions, if not, I'm going to thank Christine, I'd like to say for that. There's recommendations in that report. Can we agree to those recommendations? Agreed? Thank you, thank you. The next item on the agenda is item 14, month 11 capital approvals, 21-22. Is that Damian?
Hi, I'm Damian Watkins. I'm the finance manager for the capital team. I'm here every month. And this will be the last one, to just summarise the monthly changes, additions and variations to the capital programme that have been brought forward in this monitoring period. As usual, I won't go through each individual one, but just to summarise, we've got several items on of feasibility works for the Stockbridge Towns Fund project. So you had a paper last month, I think, from Ben Morley, just giving you an update on that. These are just the approval for the capital budgets of the feasibility of the various elements of it coming forward. Some of them are just starting their feasibility journey in capital, some of them are variations. But yeah, that's just to put that money in, and that's funded from the advance on the Towns Fund, 24 million that was given to us, just over a million pounds it was. So that's what's funding these feasibility works. So just to get those included in the capital programme at the moment. On transport, we've got quite a bit of work on cycling schemes coming forward. So we've got the approval for the phase one of the Sheaf Valley cycle route, that's about half a million pounds there. We've got some next stage of design for the large transforming cities fund, Magnet and Meadow Hole cycling scheme. Got a little bit of feasibility work to look at residential cycle parking, which I know something I've heard mentioned at previous meetings, so it's just kicking off that work to look at how we could put secure parking in residential areas. And also the start of spending some of the level-up, levelling up funding around Attcliff, looking at putting a cycle hub there to link in with the changes to public transport and increased cycling and active travelling in that area. So again, that's the feasibility front levelling up fund to kick that off. Having heard Hillsborough Park mentioned earlier as well, we've got an Arts Council grant for Hillsborough Library entrance. So to refurb that entrance, to bring it more in line with the work that's happening with the new cafe at the old Stale Block. So there's a 355,000 pound Arts Council grant coming forward for us to be able to deliver those works. On housing, council housing investment, we've got the local authority decarbonisation programme funding that we've received some already. Costs increased and we were successful in getting a little bit more funding from Tees Valley Authority, who are administering it on behalf of the government. About an extra million pounds to go into retrofitting measures into council housing properties and private sector properties as well. The largest element that's on here in terms of value is actually the increase, well, it's the annual review of the disabled facilities grant programme. So this is the funding we receive from government to administer adaptations to people's homes in order that they can remain there a little longer. A couple of years ago, the private sector housing policy was varied, so that we could use that funding more widely to provide things like fire alarms and the tele-care systems that are also used. So there's a roughly 6.7 million estimated spend going to go through that in 22-23, which will be funded from the disabled facilities grants that we receive. That's what's on Appendix 1. I've got an Appendix 2, which is just a separate recommendation really, because it depends on a decision that you're going to take on the next item about Woodburn Road and the football hubs. So it's just an authority for, if you approve the principles in the next report, that they can start to go out and look at tendering for the works that will be required to continue that development. It just means that we can kick off doing that straight away, so we can get discussions on funding on that as soon as possible. And there were the main items I think I wanted to bring to people's attention.
Thank you, Damian, and as always thorough and to the point. Any questions, comments? If not, Paul, Kate?
Are you going first, Kate? Thanks, Kate, and thanks, Terry. Damian, this may not be a question you're able to answer. Regarding the Hillsborough Library entrance, with it being an old and listed building, I just wondered if, you know, have the local heritage groups been consulted or can they? Groups, I'm thinking specifically the Conservation Advisory Group and joined up Heritage Sheffield. And I'm not, I don't know enough about this to say that it is a concern, but I am just highlighting it that, you know, there's been a hell of a lot of cultural vandalism over the last decades in and around Sheffield, and it would be good to avoid that happening.
I know I can certainly check that with Nick Partridge, who's head of libraries, who led on this bid. I can't speak for him, but I know he's really thorough on these matters, but I'll go back and find out for you, get you some more detail, definitely.
Thanks, Paul. Kate?
I'm surprised Julie's not jumping up and down about all the Stockbridge schemes and the progress that's been made with those. But thank you for the report, as Terry says, thorough as always. I'd just like to thank you for all you've put into it, particularly like to draw attention to the disabled facilities grant, because just about how significant those are in terms of being able to, a number of people in Sheffield to live independently as well, because I know we've just got a big number there, but for me, it's about people and stuff like that as well. And it's quite good actually to see the range of opportunities that will be made available to people with disabilities who do need some work undertaken on their properties to enable them to remain in the community. But overall, I'd just like to thank you for all the work you've put in over the year, Damian, and how much we've enjoyed your reports. Thank you.
Thanks, Kate. Jane?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the report. I want to talk about the El Down House. One is my last comment as the COP executive member. It's about the investment for some of our most vulnerable children, and we are their corporate parents. And I just want to say, I think it's absolutely great. And the fact it's a hair salon is even, do you know, it's just really, I think it just shows how we are really looking after some of the most vulnerable, and I'm just really proud of it. And I know it's only small compared to the others, but to me, that's the one that is really special. So I think it's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Julie?
Just not to disappoint councillor McDonald. In all seriousness, the projects that are listed under the Stockbridge Town Fund are just a number of them that are going ahead. There's been an awful lot of work put in by yourselves, Damian, and by officers across the whole council to get us to this stage. So I'd just like to place on my record, thanks to all of the officers who've been involved, because it is a massive project. It does take a lot of work, and it's also working in partnership with local community body of people who, you know, want the best for the town but don't always understand the processes and the importance of transparency of going through procurement and so forth, which doesn't always make your job as easy as it could be. So it's great to see that we're getting moves on with the projects, and thank you very much for all your support and hard work, not just yourself but colleagues as well. So thank you.
Thank you. If there's no more comments, questions, if not, thank you very much, Damian. There's recommendations in this report. Can we agree to those recommendations? Agreed? Thank you very much. Thank you, Damian.
Yeah, thank you. I'd just like to say thanks for all the time, because I'm out of here every month, but you make it very easy for me to come and do this, so thanks, everybody. And I'd just like to say, I'm not holding out, particularly the team there, Kieran and Lisa, worked so hard to get them grants in without them doing that. And Howard and Otwell, they do it stop, which honestly, I'll just bring a little report here, everybody else does hard work. Thanks a lot.
Thanks for that. The next item is Sheffield Football Hubs. Tammy and James? No, no, James, no.
Sorry, apologies from James. He has Covid, so can't be with us today, so hopefully he'll be better soon. So I shall do my best, but there may be questions that I need to refer to James on and need to come back to you. Thanks, Kate. So this is a proposal for the Sheffield hub sites across the city, an approval to progress with a new management and operational model for four sites. So the proposal is to enter into a partnership with the newly formed National Football Trust, which is underwritten by the Football Foundation. The sites that are included in the proposal include three existing sites at Graves, Thorncliff and Westfield, plus an additional site at Woodburn Road. So in terms of the history, in 2017, the council and the Sheffield Football Trust, who hold the leases for the Graves and Thorncliff sites, appointed an organisation called Puls Soccer to run the sites with a partner organisation, Leisure United, working under them and undertaking the day-to-day management across the sites. Unfortunately, in 2019, those relationships broke down and our arrangements with Puls Soccer were ended as we were unable to agree the final contractual terms and in particular payment of the management fee that was due. When those arrangements broke down and we ended the arrangements with Puls Soccer, we engaged Leisure United directly on a temporary basis to operate the sites. And those agreements, those temporary agreements are due to come to an end in June 2022. So we need to develop an alternative model. So after exploring a range of other options, including bringing facilities back in-house or looking at external procurement, our preferred option is to go with the National Football Trust model. The National Football Trust are charitable organisation, and entering into the model means that all the surpluses generated as part of the contract will be ring-fenced and reinvested in Sheffield. So any investment priorities will be linked to our local football facility plan, which is agreed and developed with the council. And I think it should also be noted that the Sheffield Football Trust, who I think I mentioned, hold the leases for the Graves and Thorncliff sites, are supportive of this proposal, and we've been working with their board of trustees on taking this forward. In addition to that, the proposal seeks to develop a fourth site at Woodburn Road, which is linked to the final item that Damian mentioned previously, and bring that under the NFT model. So the Woodburn Road site previously was managed by Power League, who withdrew from the site as part of their national rationalisation programme in January 2019. I'm sure many of the members will be aware that we've had some challenges at that site. In relation to health and safety, we've had to close the pitches previously. We've got problems with the pavilion building. What adding the Woodburn Road site will do is bring a long-term future for the site, including 2.1 million pounds investment from the Football Foundation to upgrade the pitches and the pavilion building. The council will invest 500,000 into that development as match funding, but the cost of that is fully met through this model via a lease payment as part of the National Football Trust model. I think it's been agreed that the redeveloped site at Woodburn Road will be renamed the Gordon Banks Stadium in consultation with local members, as Gordon Banks was born in Sheffield. I think actually he was born in Tinsley and he played football in the local vicinity. The council will continue to have landlord rights for all the facilities, and the NFT will be contractually committed to abide by all the funding conditions that were set and in place as part of the original schemes by the Football Foundation. This proposal allows for the council to secure a long-term solution for all four sites across the city, including a 2.1 million pound investment into Woodburn Road, annual income to meet all the borrowing costs associated with the football developments, allocation of a lifecycle maintenance allocation, and as I've previously mentioned, 100% of the profit out of this model is ring-fenced for reinvestment in Sheffield. So on that basis, I'd like to request that co-op executive members support the recommendations contained within the report, and I'm happy to try to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Tammy. Any questions or comments? Alison?
I'll just make a comment. So I think it's really exciting. It's a really brilliant opportunity that's come along. And also to highlight that it's not just about football, that there'll be other sporting activities that will be encouraged there. And so it's particularly good that Woodburn Road's been included, and Darnall will really welcome those facilities. And now all you need to do is get them a swimming pool. Thanks very much for all your work on that.
Thanks, Alison. Paul?
Thank you, Chair, and thanks for the work on this. It's brilliant. I'm a massive football fan and lifelong amateur footballer. I've played on pitches where remarkably seemed to be uphill in both halves in Sheffield. So I think we're spoiling our young people with these pitches a little bit. I wondered if, as the, when you say the money will be ring-fenced, will it be ring-fenced for more football infrastructure or what? Because I'm thinking some of our park pitches are a bit, well, those wonderful hilly pitches that I love so much, you know, some of those could do with a bit of work as well.
Yeah, so the funding's ring-fenced to support priorities within the local football facility plan. So that includes grass pitches as well as potential development of future sites. So it's the whole thing from the grassroots football right through to the development of 3G pitches. So it's the whole shebang.
Brilliant. It's really good, exciting stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more? If not, I've got, Kate?
Just a comment really, and, you know, we have been well briefed on this by James. When he first briefed me on it, it was quite complicated because there were a whole load of acronyms and everybody moving into different sets of arrangements and so on. But I have to say, I think this is a really good proposal, and I'm really pleased with the extent of the financial and legal analysis of the arrangements as well. Thank you, and thank you to James when he gets better.
Thank you, thank you, Kate. If not, just a comment from myself, Tammy to you and team and James, and, and Lisa as well, because me and the Deputy Leader Julie went to a fantastic meeting at the Isabel Ball Centre meeting the Football Foundation too, and, and to listen to their enthusiasm of our officers and the way that they work together was really quite warming, to be honest, and they spoke very highly. And I think that sometimes goes amiss when we do, that we have such fantastic officers to help us assist to deliver these schemes. So on that, I'd like to obviously welcome Sheffield Football Hubs. I have a question for you, probably not now, but if you can explain the offside rule, that would be good for us. But we obviously, I've got recommendations in the report, can we agree those recommendations? If we can, thank you. Agreed? Thank you, thank you, Tammy, and to, to James. Can I, obviously that's the end of the agenda, but I don't, I don't think we can let this moment pass as we come to the end of the electoral year, but also the way that we govern the city. This is the last Co-op Exec stroke Cabinet meeting that we will have for a decade. I'd like to thank those portfolio holders yourselves and previous portfolio holders. I've had to make decisions on behalf of the city, and sometimes it can be a very lonely place when having to make some decisions that are, may be seen to go against the majority, but it is the right decision and have to sometimes be made on behalf of the city. We are going to be the first core city that moves over to a committee system. If anybody can do it, Sheffield can do it, and we will obviously have to move with decision makers as well. So we will not have another cabinet stroke meeting. We will also be losing the scrutiny function, and I'd like to say on record, thanks to those scrutiny chairs over a number of years that have held all cabinet members to account, and as frustrating as that might be sometimes for offices as well, but it showed that we could get that as long, so I'd just like to put that on record as well. So we now move into a system after today for the next decade, and I'm sure that we will obviously have to make, do amend if you want, I think on the first few meetings, but I'm sure that we will get this over the line. So on behalf of the Co-op Exec, I'd like to thank everybody who's, who's took part, and as leader of this council, to everybody postholders under this system, a big thank you. Thank you.